We now will call this meeting north. Commissioner Waring, would you kindly leave the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
What is we?
To the flag, into the United States of America, into the republic where it stands, one nation,
under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's been a pretty busy agenda tonight. We'll start with discussion approval of minutes from the last meeting. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Onto discussion of our previous calendar.
Nor do I.
Nor do I. We'll move on to previous signed documents, discussion, possibly a motion to approve.
So, so moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Next up, we have department update.
Uh, we're, can we, we're not going to have department update tonight.
I guess we can go home then.
But will you please just skip that?
Okay. Uh, request for award of bid asphalt maintenance. Mr. John Boss.
Hey, John. How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good thanks.
So, you have the two, two requests?
Yes, I did.
Um, so both these are in the approved budget for this year. Uh, one is sidewalk replacement in the sheriff's employee entrance. Sidewalk to the lower parking lot and the main entry apron, main entrance to the, uh, to the courthouse. Put it up bid. We've got two bids back, one from EMI for twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and the other for Brenton Construction for twenty thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Um, so I'm asking for your authorization to award the bid to Brenton Construction.
So it looks like, um, the scope of the job, material used is apples to apples between the two companies.
Yep.
Amazing to see the discrepancy.
Yep. It's actually amazing to see GM I've been on. They're really big companies. So it kind of makes me wonder about how busy things are, things starting to slow down, if they're starting to go after really small work.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's nice when we can have at least something comparable with years in the past, especially during the COVID years. We're having trouble getting one vendor for different projects. So thoughts by the commissioners?
I have a question. What was the budget amount that we had?
Some clue. What do you think? Twenty-five thousand dollars in my other improvements line, um, and the other one is fifty thousand dollars in the CIP.
For the asphalt was fifty K?
Um, for the sidewalk replacement.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five in my other improvements county budget. And the, um, the other one that I'm gonna ask is out of the CIP and that's fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Yeah. I don't remember. But both under, under.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any questions? We're also looking at a bid from Superior Seal Coat.
Or do you wanna wrap this one first?
I, would we not bundle, bundle these or center?
They're, they're two separate, yeah, they're gonna be two separate places in the budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Onto more asphalt budgets.
Um, we're gonna put an RPO for seal coating, crack killing, line striping and, um, some asphalt repairs which include repairing one catch basin that is, that's kind of sunk out in the parking lot. Um, we got three, three bids, one from Superior Seal Coat of thirty-three thousand six hundred and ninety dollars, North American Infrared of thirty-five thousand six hundred dollars and then Premier Asphalt Maintenance of fifty thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. So I'm asking for your authorization to award the contract to Superior Seal Coat.
Even better than two bids or three.
Yeah.
You were pretty close.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Are you familiar with this company? No, throughout Massachusetts, I did look them up and looked at their Facebook page, their website, um, their Google reviews. You know, my communication back and forth with them has been positive and proactive. I haven't had the Jason like me, I feel confident that they do their job. North American Infrared has been the vendor over the years. It's done um, almost all of, all of the work, but everything is apples for apples. Um, the scopes are the same, the products are the same. Um, and with the extra expenses that I've had this year so far, kind of need the nineteen hundred bucks.
Hmm. Makes sense.
Yep.
I would do the same.
So, that's good. Thank you.
Have a motion.
Yes. I move, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Okay, thank you for that, John. Thank you for that. And?
I'm gonna go right on to the.
The courthouse?
Yep.
Yeah, please, please.
Um, so you've got, uh, I know you have in your packets the, um, schedule of values from bound construction somewhere in there. That breaks out the cost of the project and everything. Um, so I did a quick three slide, um, PowerPoint um, to discuss the project. Basically, the project highlights down there are renovations to, to existing holding cells that are current ones. Construction of two brand new holding cells. Um, one of the cells is gonna be a fully ADA compliant cell, so it'll be larger than the other three. Um, it's gonna be an attorney-client interview area, uh, staircase from the basement up into the county attorney's office area. Total of five additional offices in the basement, one conference room, and then the three bathrooms that are down there will be um renovated as well and fully ADA compliant. There'll be some camera upgrades that monitor the cells and, and the, uh, entryway down there. And the intent to move restorative justice from here to, um, the basement. And I have a, another slide that shows the layout much better than what you have in there. Um, and some enhancements to the sheriff's area where they intake everybody. Um, for example, like an Iowa station in an event that they have to spray somebody, be able to decontaminate, um, a break room. In their break room will be adding, you know, a sink so that they can wash their hands and, and stuff like that in their break rooms. Um, you know, flooring and other things like that. Nothing really major down there. And then, of course, HVAC upgrades which include dehumidification, waterproofing, um, and all new climate control down there. And this is the layout of everything. So this right here is the entry now from underneath the overhang where people would come in. This and this are the two existing cells that we have now. This will be the third cell, this will be the fully ADA compliant cell, which I also understand that they'll use to house juveniles if they, if they have any. Um, and the fourth cell right here, this will be the client slash attorney um, interview room. So the, um, I guess the defense attorney would be on this side and the, the client on this side. Small maintenance area right here to support maintenance activities in the courthouse. And this whole area right here in yellow will be where restorative justice moves. So they'll have their own entry, um, their own vestibule right here. Um, an office here, here, and here, um, for the caseworkers and for Mike. This will be a bathroom where they're able to do all of their, their testing. And the small break room, photocopyer, storage area here. This area in green out represents, um, basically just a common hallway and the path to egress out of the building. And then down here and the county attorney's, below the county attorney's office, there'll be a staircase right here that goes upstairs. And then these are all, this is bathroom space right here. Um, offices here, 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 and the conference room there. Um, some more offices there. So that's, that's the layout that reflects the pricing that you got up here. So we really tried to work hard to maximize the space down there. And come up with the best use of the space and future expansion and as they add staff and try to address all the needs that we've heard from everybody.
Deborah, when we first, the commissioners first started discussing this proposal, were we in the just over one million dollar ballpark for these proposed renovations? Where did we start out with?
Uh, one point five is what has been carried in the NARPA project list. And right along, we've been talking about it, you know, because that was an absolute yes.
Mm-hmm, it was.
That if, if it should run over, if we can't afford to do, depending on how much it runs over, um, we would have to, you know, see how much we can do. There, there's options all the time. It does turn out because we have we can fit, um, in our meeting to go over the details of this contract or this, uh, breakdown of the one point seven nine eight seven one six. If I plug that number in instead of the one point five, it puts our ARPA funds overspent by five thousand two hundred change. So Andre said, well, I can easily, we'll find five thousand. So he said he, you know, reduce it by the five thousand. So we're within budget. We also talked about in going through here, there's things that they may, where they may be able to save money. Um, instead of looking at cell doors, they might be able to, uh, fix or alter the ones that are there. Um, the detention area ceilings I talked about there, they're gonna leave, uh, be able to leave half of them. There's a railing, an oak railing planned upstairs in the county attorney's office that that's really a wishless thing that doesn't need to happen.
Okay.
You know, right there, we can get us below budget.
Okay.
Plus, we have a sixty thousand dollar owner contingency in there, which could be reduced and also could not be spent is, you know, provide, you know, where everything's opened up and been demoed. Sure, where we would find any surprises at this point. So we could certainly, certainly areas that they've put in there that they've given us kind of allowances on that may not necessarily even be used.
The computer, this
Yeah.
computer equipment, they're factoring in twenty thousand dollars. But we've yet to see a scope of that work or an estimated cost on it. And so there's other things that we questioned and we really would need to get more information. This is basically serving as a gross.
Uh, that's.
Guaranteed maximum.
Guaranteed maximum.
Gross is just. Right.
And we haven't budgeted for any furniture fixtures yet.
No. There is no budget. Right now, everyone is just gonna keep using the furniture they've been using. So we don't, you know, in the county attorney's area, that will, they probably don't have a.
Probably the states, right, so.
Which one?
Restorative justice offices.
Right, they don't take their equip, their furniture. They brought it from there originally. They're kind of traveled with it and we'd have to bring it back there.
What's the timeline of, of construction?
They hope to be done by the end of July.
Good.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
This July?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, that's pretty ambitious.
That's pretty good.
Say so.
I mean, if you were to go down there now, I mean, it's, it's basically, it's, um, it's opened right up and it's just ready for construction. Um, so, you know, we've done the waterproofing, so now it's just a matter of fixing all the elevation differences in the slab and infilling some, um, areas with concrete and then starting to lay out the framing and framing and doing all the roughing and going right through the project. So, I mean, it's kind of, they've got everybody lined up and ready to go.
Hmm.
Yeah, they're gonna hit it, hit it pretty hard.
Good. Great.
You, you know, this is a veteran for the county who need to do this. We have a building that was built in eighteen ninety-six, so one of the short, one of the unfortunate things about that is if you look at the demolition line item, hazardous materials abatement is over eighty thousand dollars because the building's old and there's asbestos everywhere and God knows what else is there.
Uh, it's not there anymore.
Right, yeah. So, I mean, it makes sense for us to do this. But I do think we can whittle it down without sacrificing performance and results. And that task is really more yours than the rest of us. But I think that if you take a sharp pencil to this with Deborah, you can probably pare it down to a more reasonable number that we can sufficiently fund going forward. Commissioner Hodges?
I have no questions. This is gonna be a miracle. I mean, I never wanted to step foot in that dump after I got out of there years ago. And I didn't want to know what you found out there, the pollutants, um, but I'm just happy that we're making use of space and.
And I do wanted to say too, um, you know, that if we tried to, if we tried to finish other things later, and then I just want to speak freely that, you know, everything is designed now to certain codes today. If we wait a year or wait two years, that one point seven nine eight, maybe two point one two years from now.
Sure.
You know, and if we have the opportunity with ARPA ones today
Yep.
to do it and not burden taxpayers two years from now, um, I think this is kind of getting that.
Agreed. And I think Commissioner Hodges' statement really says it all. As you know, he served many years as sheriff and, you know, he perhaps, you know, kindly referred to it as a dump. I'm sure it was scarier than that before he went in there.
There's a little signs and land plate down there for sure.
So, uh, yeah, let's, let's try and get this down to a more realistic number to the extent that we can and, and we should proceed and Commissioner Waring, if we can have this done by even Labor Day weekend, that's a, a big win for the county and for the courthouse. And I think that, that reflects, you know, yes, reflects well on the county overall. Good. Thank you, John.
I think we can definitely manage that, that number and, and, um, do all.
I'm sure you can.
I believe in approval to be, for the, this project with the contingency that it remains in line with available ARPA files.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Thank you, John. Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, John.
Great.
Okay, Ms. Deborah.
Okay, um, I am requesting your authorization to implement the wage increases for non-union employees for two thousand twenty-four now that the budget has been passed. The budget was, um, approved with a three point six percent step increase for non-union employees insistent with all four of the union contracts. So when we get to this point, we have non-union employees who have been evaluated and uh, recommended for wage increases from since January first through now, and we just asked them to hold steady and wait until, for your approval of those increases. Um, and then they will get those increases retroactively to their anniversary date. So I'm asking you are willing to authorize those wage increases at this time?
And if, if, if I remember that those increases are contingent upon a satisfactory evaluation?
Yes. That's correct.
As presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you again, commissioners.
Yes. I'm gonna ask Lori to speak for this next point. Risky to walk, but we didn't last this long. All right. Good evening.
Good evening, Laura.
Hello.
Well, thank you for asking.
So this, uh, request is to authorize the environmental services director, uh, RJ Polly, signed, um, vehicle title and registration. So this is for the vehicle that, um, the sheriff's department has transferred to the nursing home. The title on that vehicle is going to the Belknap County Sheriff's Department as well as the registration. And it needs to get transferred, um, the title and the registration. Um, so it's no longer a police vehicle and it's solely a government vehicle. Um, and so to do that, we need to sign the back of the title. And so it, it's just like, as if the vehicle were being sold.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this was a first for me, so this was a learning experience for me, but, um, I'm sure that the city and the state are sitting hearing from all of us anyway at this point, but we got it straight, so that's good. So we need to, um, sign the back of the title as the seller and then the buyer is also going to be up. And that's the person that I'm asking you to authorize as a signer on this. And that person should be the same person who's going to go to the town and the state and sign those documents as well. Um, and that's for the city of Laconia and the state of New Hampshire DMV. Um, so that's my request. I'm asking you to authorize Richard Polly to be the signer on this and then be able to make those transactions. And then we'll also need, um, um, so he would be signing as the buyer and then we'll also need to have it signed, um, by an authorized signer as the seller.
And who would that individual be?
Um, that can actually be yourselves, somebody from your body. Um, as it turns out, because this is registered and titled to the sheriff's department, it could also be a person from that department. This vehicle, um, we believe was signed initially by, um, Craig Wigan. It goes back to when he was here. Um, so it could be either somebody that is authorized from the sheriff's department or it could be one of yourselves.
Okay, so the sheriff and the deputy sheriff could duly sign it as well.
That is correct.
Commissioners.
It's gonna be titled in Belknap County's name?
Yes, just Belknap County.
Okay.
So what are you asking that RJ be authorized to sign? RJ would be the, uh, buyer on this title. And the city of Laconia said that the buyer will be the same person who's gonna sign the applications and the registration with the, um, town, city and the state. So it's somebody who's authorized, you are authorizing to.
So how do we choose the environmental services director to be the individual that's gonna be the one that's gonna register our county vehicles?
I'm feeling like this is specific to this vehicle and this is not in across the board thing. This is simply to have this vehicle transferred over. Um, I think that if there was something in the future, that would come before you again.
Okay. Well, why have we chosen this individual to be the one that's gonna sign for this vehicle? Why isn't it not the county administrator?
Or the sheriff or the deputy sheriff.
Well, it's not right. So the sheriff, the sheriff doesn't, is not.
Right.
So he, he runs the department, I mean, he's elected official of the sheriff's department, but it's, it's a county asset, so I'm just, I'm not understanding why it is that.
How did he get selected?
Yeah, why, why is the county administrator not the one that we're authorizing to sign?
In, in all honesty, this, this person is going to be the person that goes down to the city and then drives to Concord.
Correct.
And, um, I think it's possible that it's that position that has performed that duty in the past. Um, it's be, is it because he, um, he asked, it has to be the same person who signs the title? Is going to also go to Concord?
Excuse me, Deborah, just let me interrupt you for a moment. The sheriff, uh, is shaky, said, raising, he might be able to shed some insight on this. Bill?
Yeah, so I, I did a little bit of research on this because again, it comes up with sheriff's office vehicles. Like in order for us to get the number plates and things to get registered as a sheriff's office, we have to have it, uh, registered as the sheriff's office, the agency that is actually using as a police vehicle. And in this particular case, it was the same thing where it was registered to the sheriff's office and it was signed uh, by Sheriff Wigan because he went down to get the vehicle at the time and, and brokered the deal, if you will. Uh, it's still a county asset, so it doesn't, no matter who signs it, it's still a county asset. It's just who can register the vehicle and who can put certain plates on it. Uh, here at the county, a county municipal plate, a G plate, uh, is normally done by whoever goes down as the agent of the county. They honestly don't care who it is. Uh, it could be the top to the bottom, but they honestly don't care as long as, uh, it's being signed as that county asset. And in this particular case, um, the, the nursing home is the one that is, is predominantly gonna, uh, preside over that vehicle. They're gonna take care of all the maintenance, gonna come out of their budget. And I believe that RJ is the one that is actually gonna be the one to go down to Concord, register it, do all that stuff. And if there's any questions with that vehicle, uh, he would predominantly be the person that's maintenance. I, I, and I probably spoke a little too much, but.
No, that's okay.
Thank you for that. Okay, that makes sense.
Thank you. Yes.
Commissioner Waring.
Okay, I still couldn't understand why, but.
I think you still have the question of how is it that that person is going to do that?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Who, whose budget expenditures come out to repair the vehicle has, has no bearing on who's gonna go and sign, sign the title application and sign the type, but.
I think it really is a convenience thing just because the nursing home administrator has been saying to her, maintenance guy, go get this thing taken care of. And so if he's going to drive down to Concord to get it registered, it could be his name, um.
Right, and then see if she's gonna do it, then Shelly or you, Bill. Okay, I think I understand. So, let's see, I move that we grant this request to authorize Environmental Services to sign the title of registration. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think I'm gonna sit tight as I'm there.
Yes, you have financial updates.
We should have a cash flow first there. Um, the cash flow is updated with actuals for January, February and half of March, or half month of March already. Um, and it includes the TAM. Uh, the TAM closed last Thursday with fourteen. And, uh, we received three bids on the TAM. All the info was sent to the treasurer. He signed the agreement with the, uh, with Bank of America and they gave us the lowest rate of four point five five percent. We borrowed nine million two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars and the interest on that's going to be three hundred thirty-six thousand four hundred and one dollars and forty-seven cents. Um, that is actually fifty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars less than the budgeted interest amount. Um, and you're gonna see that reflected in the budget actual when we get over to that. Um, and then, uh, as we always do, we'll be watching the cash flow naturally. Um, if you look down towards the end of the year, toward November, by the end of November, it, it helps us getting low again, but we'll keep operating this with actuals, of course, and keep an eye on that. Um, and update you as we go. Um, the revenue report, we're nineteen percent of the way through this year. Um, there are some notable areas which are deeds and corrections. Right now, I'm showing that the revenue was a little bit low in those two areas. Um, and then in the sheriff's department and nursing home, we have a couple of areas in revenue there which is actually projecting the surplus. Um, again, adjustments will be made to all of these areas as necessary and reported to you through the year. Um, if you look at the bottom line on, on this one, the revenue is a little tough, it only shows five percent. And so the reason, of course, for that is there's large amounts of things in here that'll get collected at the one time, um, that haven't been collected yet. And so, um, for the most part, things are moving along as expected and we'll keep an eye on, um, all of the areas naturally and update those and let you know accordingly. Um, the expense again. The expense, again, 19% of the way through the year and keeping that in mind, while looking at the bottom line here, that's reflected at 18%. There isn't any one particular area yet that, you know, we're really in such an early state of the year, we haven't altered a lot of things really yet at all hardly. But you will see, as I mentioned before, that we have a projected savings in the federal fund and the nursing home that service lines that pertain to interest for the TAM borrowing. And so with that, there's a surplus projected of $58,000 right now. But again, it's early and all of this is updated as we go with the numbers as the year progresses and actually.
And the budget column, this is what was adopted?
Yes, it is.
About the unanticipated expenditure budget, it was increased. And offset by the fund balance.
They, they didn't do that.
They didn't, they took that out.
Right. They took it out and then they took it out. At that point, the executive budget review committee took it out and then during the delegation meeting, they added 200,000 back in, I want to say.
Back into.
To be used from fund balance. So that one point.
They took all of it out?
No, no, they took out the, I think, 200,000.
They had 250.
Okay, they took the 250,000 out.
Yeah.
And then the delegation added, added 200 back in or 250?
I believe it was 200. Lori was 200?
Come to 1.9.
200.
From fund balance, but nothing back to the expense.
Right. The expense, they did add money into the nursing home. I, I don't know if they put it in the wage line or the contracted services. They basically said they would prefer to just budget for it.
Okay.
So they added to.
Okay, so they added it to, okay. So it's in, it's in the budget, just moved it from where we had, okay. And what about the maintenance project too that we?
They funded that.
And that's within the maintenance budget?
It's in capital, it's a capital.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it looks like for now, the financial for the county is off to a pretty good start for 2024. These numbers look pretty good.
I think, I think so. And, you know, one of the things I recall, it seems like almost every year in regards to like deeds, for instance, it seems as though they come out of the winter starting slow and then they sometimes will pick up through the summer. I know she said that.
Yeah, I think she said at the budget hearings, well, she felt her numbers would overall be pretty strong. There might be some very small slippage compared to 2023. As the market continues to slow down just a little bit, but it's still pretty strong for real estate market commissioners.
Through the first quarter, we haven't experienced any unexpected significant expenditures?
Although I'm thinking of, he's not here now, but I'm thinking about, Vaughn had mentioned something about he's had a few. We did have an insurance claim, but we got some of that back. Were you not in your head? Do you have to talk about? Oh, okay, you're, yeah, the details, but that line's not going to go beyond that anyhow. So that wouldn't be.
Good.
The outside detail?
Yes, well, outside details right now is 58% spent. So we have deputies out there working and our revenues are up to offset that as well. But I may be coming before you for a request to gather some additional appropriation for that.
All right. Thank you for letting me know.
Yep, certainly come before the request whenever you'd like. Where it goes from there, I can't make any guarantees.
I think we're good, Lori. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next up Sheriff Wright is here and he has a lot of things going on.
What happens when the budget gets through.
It's a lot of trouble, but it branches first.
So good evening. The reason I asked the sergeant to be here and the chief deputy is because they have two spots that they're, that they've been intimately involved in with the projects here. The first one on the list is a request to accept the award for the MDT grant. Like you remember, last year we had applied for the MDT grant. We were awarded or earmarked a certain amount of money. We had went out and got bids for what it would cost. This is a 2575 match where we have come up with a 25%. Sergeant Trotia here did all the work on this grant to secure it and to get some of the bids done. We did give bids, which you should have in your packet. Some of the companies that we dealt with did not completely bid everything because they actually sourced it out, which they actually sourced it out to the company that we're recommending to go with for the complete update. So we had already budgeted in the IT budget what that 25% match is and that's to pay for the MDTs and the up. So I'm asking for first to accept the grant, the awarded grant. And then the next thing would be to recommend to award a contract to the MDT purchases as well as the update of that Glacier, the Glaciers company that's under.
Doug, do you know why Glacier Computer is going to?
Yes, when I spoke to them, I asked if they would give a bid. They did call back and said that was out of their league. They've never done a project like this and declined to bid on it.
And Mainstay and Diamond Advantage, for some reason their quotes are incomplete. Was that their intention or was that an oversight on their part?
No, they mentioned that they only wanted the bid on a portion. I believe Mainstay was the part of the computer. Whereas some of the other ones just said they wanted to do the stands and install. We did get a complete bid, as the sheriff mentioned, from, I believe it's Glacier. And that was with them providing the computers, the stands, the printers, everything, a complete install in six of our units.
MDT does a lot of work with the other counties, don't they?
MDT, the mobile data terminals?
Aren't they used throughout the state? Commissioner Hogg.
Maybe I'm just missing it, Billy, but what's the bid that you're adding on us?
So the total expenditure is $44,557.76. So that's what we're going to pay upfront upon all the receipts being given back to the state after the work is complete. They'll reimburse us $29,955.82. So the contribution from the sheriff, from this project at 25% share is the $14,601.94, which was included in this year's budget, the computer upgrades and all that.
Got it now, thanks.
And this also includes, we get the docking stations, the chargers, the mounts, the stands that all go into the cruisers, installation, printers, antennas and printer paper. It does state like we're going to e-citation, which we print out the citations right on roadside and then we can submit the citation paperwork directly through the state, through the internet.
Are these RF now still or are they cellular?
Nope, everything's cellular. I actually had the last RF modem and that was phased out sometime in, I believe it was 2015.
Makes sense.
So commissioners, first we have a request to accept the award. Deborah Doudina, can we make it?
Yes.
I will move that we accept the award for the MDT grant. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, the recommendation to give it to MDT, seeing as how the other competitors.
The Glacier, Commissioner, the Glacier.
The name of the company is actually Glacier.
Glacier, okay. Seeing as how the other companies either did not meet the scope of the bid or declined entirely to make a, make a, make a bid on it. It looks like the only option to go forward with this grant is to accept the bid from Glacier, is it not?
At least having one complete place to go to in the event that something was.
There's no, you know, it's there. You cannot do it piecemeal with the other companies.
We most certainly could, but it just complicates things as to one part breaks, we got to start figuring out who we're wearing what. We prefer to have Glacier as one stop shop. They come to our office here, they do the installs here. If there's any problems, we can make one phone call and say our MDT system's not working and they come in and fix it.
Have we used that vendor before?
No, but it is in, the sergeant can fill you in on who does use it.
So basically, during this process, I did speak with the state police. I did speak with other law enforcement agencies and they highly recommended Glacier. They're doing a lot. Currently, the Merrimack County Sheriff's Department is getting outfitted through these, this company. And like I said, the state police use this unit company to install all this.
I know, I wouldn't be comfortable going with multiple vendors. I think really, you know, you're only asking for trouble. So I mean, I would, I would suggest we just go with one.
If we were going to save 25%, I would probably say that's great, but
Jumping around, yeah.
Not based on what little quotes we got, what little bits and pieces. I don't, I don't feel it would be fruitful for the county to go that route.
I move we award the contract to Glacier.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Next up, we have a license agreement to be awarded to Industrial Tower Wireless.
Yes, so this is one of our power sites for our radio communications system. It is a site that that we are not currently on and that we're looking to moving to. It is a five-year term. That's why I bring it before you because it's over that year mark. The yearly cost is, at this given point, is 4,200 with a 3% escalator every year thereafter, but it is a five-year contract, so that's why I come before you.
Bill, do you know, or Doug, do you know what the industry standard is for these types of contracts throughout the state, Northland Counties?
Well, yeah, I'm probably that local guy that has that question because I can tell, so again, having dealt dealing with these vendors, we're looking at some tower spaces are 7,000 a month and some are down as 20, like we've been paying $2,400 a year for some of the places that we're currently on. The downside is that we're not, we're not doing a direct replacement on our equipment. So the brand new equipment that we're getting, we're not just putting it where it used to be. We're actually improving the service of this equipment by putting it on the tower tops where it's supposed to be, which is costing, you know, more money to be, have to be put in there because we're competing again with, with, you know, AT&amp;T and Verizon and all these other companies. In this particular case here, this, this power site is a brand new tower site. So it's up in Bridgewater. It's actually, will cover the entire Pemmy Valley area that, you know, basically down the river that shoots down to New Hampton, through northern Samerton, up through New Hampton up on the north section where there's a, on the opposite side of the ridge where Pinnacle Hill does not cover. It will also cover down Center Harbor, down around Winona Road and then into Meredith is the goal and then anything north towards Holdens.
We're getting prime space to fill it on the.
Yeah, so, so on this tower here, they're actually putting us at the very top. The downside is that we're, we're still negotiating the installation fees, which is being done through Two Way. Well, Two Way is the one that's contracting this company to do it. So that part is still being negotiated, but, but that should be covered through that, that process that we already have in place with them doing the work. This, this amount, 350 a month, is definitely an amicable amount of money for us to be able to maintain this. This is the amount that I'm hoping to get for all the towers. But I can tell you that there's two towers that are still holdout right now and they're, they're taken care of by SBA, which is one in Gilman Hill and Meredith and then the second one is Prospect Mountain in Alton. Those two towers are critical towers for us. We have not gotten the response back, but it sounds like it's going to be like 1675 a month is what they're offering to us. Now, that's better than 7,000 where we started. So again, it's, we're still trying to negotiate, still trying to do that. Those towers were also towers that we were paying like 2,400 a month, I mean, 2,400 a year to be on. But again, we're slapped, our antenna was slapped on the side of their shed at the base of the mountain and, or the top of the mountain, but on the, on the base of the, the radio tower. And we're trying to improve that. We're trying to improve the communications on our areas like Barnstead, Yomington, Alton, there's certain areas that we're just having a hard time reaching and the solution is being 100 or 120 feet up on the tower. And again, some of that's prime space, so unfortunately we pay for it. This, and at this day and age, you know, again, you folks had approved $1.8 million to, for a new radio build. There's no reason for us to put brand new tires and rims on a rusted out Chevy, you know, Chevette. We need to, we need to be up on the towers where it's going to fix our problems. And then we have the newest updated equipment that we have right now just sitting on the, on the sideline, waiting for these tower companies to agree. We do have a couple of towers that are actually, everything's been installed. We just haven't turned them on because it doesn't match with our current system. So we got to get all the other sites plugged in and ready to go before we can actually flip the switch.
Jim, is industrial, are they well regarded as far as you know, the reputation?
The tower sites?
Well, Industrial Tower, the company, the LLC, they, in your, in your experience.
I couldn't speak to it.
How do you like their site?
Oh, the building site up in Bridgewater, yeah, the site is amazing. It's one of the nicer sites that we have. They, they do everything dressed right, dressed.
Okay, so the reviews are good for them.
Reputable, reputable sites, a nice site. We went up there and it certainly will do the job.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant my experience with the company. I don't, I don't know the company. It certainly doesn't.
Thank you. Commissioners, what say you?
Well, we need good sites.
Has the late agreement been reviewed by you and or Lori or legal counsel?
Definitely not by legal counsel.
It doesn't need to be reviewed by any one of the three of us. Does agreement come from them, Billy?
It did, yes. It's very consistent with all the other ones that we have. It's pretty cookie cutter.
So we have time for it to be reviewed?
Is there a time?
No, there's no, like, our goal is to get the radios turned on and ready to go by July. The tower sites are kind of holding us up, but it's nothing pressing. We don't need it done by next week or anything like that, so whatever you all decide, but, but I think price point.
Next meeting?
See you there, or I'm willing to make a motion contingent upon satisfactory view by you and or legal counsel.
So you want to have Paul take a look at that to give his blessing?
Well, that's my motion and then you can decide where it needs to go from there.
I'll say, I'll say, yeah. Okay, good motion, Commissioner. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And then the next.
Is to, this has to do with the Tactical Operations Center and the grant that we had won last year, two years ago, for Homeland Security. And it's, this is a recommendation to award the contract to Chef's Unit and Truck Builders LLC to refurbish the tactical command post. Now, this was previously awarded to Sheepdog and Halogen. As you're aware, they have withdrawn from the job. So it left us undone and the second RFP that was answered was answered by Chef's Unit Truck and Builders. They did a few adjustments to coincide with the grant. And I have Deputy McIntyre here who's, again, intimately knowledgeable about the process and what he has and a nice PowerPoint for your viewing.
So this is a continuation on the project. And I guess to kind of shortcut it, after the awards and your.
After the awards and your agreement to the award and Sheepdog accepting it, the Grant Management Bureau wanted to review the, wanted to review the scope of the project. During their review of it, their inquiry was why so much originally been allocated to radios and communication and now wanted to allocate it to other systems in the, in the project? So I was able to submit an amendment that explained that to them, that met their satisfaction and they agreed to go forward with the project. Obviously, the hiccup is Sheepdog was awarded and withdrew before this amendment could be drawn up, reviewed and formally accepted by management, branch management bureau. So they've accepted it and in the process, we're back here to keep this project alive. Obviously, there's two issues, one is, you know, the, the issue with Sheepdog, which is in legal position right now and whether or not we're gonna entertain going forward with this grant, which still has a value of about, you know, a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars that's been awarded, it's a hundred percent grant. So as the receipts are accumulated and turned in, we'll be, we'll recover a hundred percent of, of the money spent. Obviously, again, separating the, the areas.
And so in the letter here, it says the project was approved vendor as reviewed, so it wasn't approved with.
With this.
Regional vendor?
So it was approved with this vendor, Sheep, Chef Unit. So what I had to do because they withdraw, that's what created a little bit of, and I went to the other respondent to the RFP. Chef Unit was interested in working with me, they worked very diligently on getting together the appropriate prices, the configuration, breaking down all the components so that they met the authorized equipment listing, FEMA, and to, and to fit it in, in the categories necessary.
So GMS has approved project amount and Chef Units to do the work.
Correct.
And they, they have reaffirmed, that's still good?
Yes, yep, and they don't, they, they, this is the final process. Before I thought you were the final process, but apparently you weren't the final process, they were the final process. Now they've said they're good, you're the final part of the process.
And the fifty-eight hundred dollar shipping allowance that's gets there and back?
That gets us, that is calculated for two deputies or actually it's the sheriff, salary chair for myself to drive it to Texas and fly back and then two people that fly down, get trained on vehicle and drive it back. And that's, that's how that figure was allocated and that's an allowance for that amount.
Okay.
And that's paid for reimbursed by the grant.
Okay.
It's all been approved, like everything's been given to the state to make sure that there was no hiccups or any issues or any further discussion beyond where we're at today.
I, I do, I brought you some pictures of design, so you can kind of, I know I've explained some of it, but Chef's Unit is located in Houston, Texas. They have been in, they have fifty years of building specialized units for both food trucks and command vehicles. So some of the CAD design they did, they did CAD design for our vehicle. So this, this is our vehicle and the components that they plan on tearing off, reconfiguring and replacing. There's multiple things that are deficient on ours, there'll be new awning units, new scene lighting, if you can see areas. There's one here, all new scene lighting, wraparound surveillance system, cameras located in the corners of vehicles all the way around. Ladder systems, access to the top. Stabilization system, sorry about this. New air conditioning units to replace the ones that are not currently functioning.
It's gonna save Ballot County Police?
It will save Ballot County Police and, and it does for a reason because it's a sheriff's department vehicle, it does say sheriff's department, but we are regional force, so if Gilminton has an incident, this command vehicle can roll out to Gilminton. It's not special to, to us, we do, we are support servers, so that's why, that's why that's says police.
Will the vehicle live here?
Yes, as it does, as it does already.
Yeah, yeah. The stabilization equipment, that was a, that was one of the added features. One of the features that kind of put us at the end of the budget originally was a telescopic mast for the surveillance system. So we came, the workaround was to eliminate the telescopic post and to put the system around the, the body. So that brought us to within the budget, but we weren't able to fit that telescopic mast in, into the project. It was just too, too much money. So basically the paint, the redesign, the graphics, interior and so forth, making sure you have the interior layout. Logical deficiencies here. On the vehicle, now they'll, we, we bought one new awning for the driver's side, the, I'm sorry, the other side I showed you. The driver's side awning is gonna be an existing awning that they will re, reinstall, but there is additional lighting on, scene lighting on, on that side as well. Interior configurations, screens, smart boards and monitors. The other vendors listed on your letter are the radios. Obviously, there's surveillance system and there's radios. Those are Motorola Communications or Two Way and Nivo are the installers and vendors. They've also been in contact with each other during this big project and they're gonna ship part of the equipment that's gonna be configured into the rebuild of the body, like the cameras will be installed by Chef's Unit and then the rest of the computer and so forth will be installed up here at, at Two Way and Nivo.
Commissioners?
Billy, the original grant, the grant was awarded at one eighty-one, five eighty-five.
Yeah, I think it was a little, yeah, that's with the grant, yep.
What is that based, what is that figure based on? How did, how did that come to that amount?
So that number was calculated by my predecessor on about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in communications equipment. That communications equipment was originally factored before a lot of the ARPA money was done to upgrade or designated these towers and all this others. So because of that upgrade, some of the upgrades that were factored into this probably aren't necessary. So there were portable radios factored in here, there was, let's say, computer systems that like a dispatcher could literally.
We, we were actually talking about putting console, consulate in the, in the TOC. But we moved away from that because the need for consulate has been wiped out by this new radio system that we have. But we also found that there were other deficiencies with the, with the actual physical plant itself, so that we just kind of swapped the monies around to meet what we needed to make this a good command vehicle. And that's, that's how we came up with that.
What's the mechanical condition of this, somebody might notice on the engine?
It has under ten thousand miles, I wanna say it's got ninety, it is one of the letters I know it's written.
So it's on ninety-two hundred and nineteen?
Yep, so thank you.
So it has very little wear.
Very, and it's diesel, so.
The transmission's good?
The body's solid on it, there's no rust.
No rust or anything, okay.
It's a great vehicle, it's just, it's antiquated because it's a two thousand and five. It's done its time, it's been out in the weather, it's not covered unfortunately and then another project we love to bring it away at some point, but, but it, it's time to be reconfigured and refurbished.
The back section of it is fiberglass, so it, it, it's gotten cracked and the jump coating's not white there, so that had to be addressed.
And what's the demand for this vehicle, how often do you use it?
Well, we, we use it on this, primarily the SWAT vehicle, so first any SWAT caller, we go. But also for any, any natural disaster incident that somebody needed, some type of shelter to, to coordinate, like a joint unified command, could be bike week, could be a concert. This vehicle, Laconia just acquired one through a grant, it was north of five hundred thousand dollars. But again, there's, there's his, theirs is Laconia's and I don't think they're gonna hand the keys to Gilminton or another agency or.
So Laconia would never share with another?
I wouldn't say never because I won't speak for them, but because the demographics done for grants are done on countywide demographics information, but the reality is this vehicle since two thousand and five, when SWAT team was kind of in its inception, that's what the purpose has been and that's how it's been conducted.
If the state police request the use of this vehicle?
Yeah, we would, we would, we would.
Grant that request?
We were considering bringing it into the search in Barnstead for fishing game this weekend.
Okay.
So there's, there's purposes for it.
Sure.
And I believe other agencies are asking for them because it's a requirement in these active shooter, these, these mass casualty events that they're doing practices on around the state. If they don't have a command center, then they usually write that up as a deficiency and people put in for the grant and, you know, they, they apply them and try their hat in that. We happen to have it, it's literally hundreds of thousands of dollars less for us to refurbish this and provide the service than it is to buy a new one.
Of course.
We, we could apply for a new one, I mean, that's facility and some of it, we're trying to be responsible with this, but we could apply for a new one and, but then we'd have this one that.
So you're going to drive it down Texas, fly back and then fly down when it's done and bring it back?
You say I want to.
Do you want to?
I would be, I'm willing to do it to make the project successful, sir. So it's a long drive to Texas.
Yeah, it is.
And then.
Sure, you're comfortable, right?
I'm sure.
I have no problem with, you know, the one sixty-five, would we jeopardize anything if we authorized, we've got a bid at one sixty-five? And if we authorize the full amount, one eighty-five, are we jeopardizing anything with the grant people by doing that?
So what you jeopardize is again, what comes first, the chicken or the egg, or we keep chasing our tail. So all of these processes, your requirement to apply are then our application, our, our collection of bid or estimates, not even bids, and then come back and say we've been, we've been awarded, can we accept the award to go out to RFP? These people have submitted their RFP, which one can we accept? It goes back and forth, so if you choose to do that, I would have to then present any new bids back to the state bureau to them review it once again. So we'd be back here.
And she's requested that we.
She's accepted this company to, to.
No, they're asking about the extra money.
So you're saying, you're saying, you're saying, we give you that extra money?
Oh, so you're talking about extra money spent. So in the original request, we said be allowed to spend up to that amount, should we come up with something that was unforeseen in the bidding process? Yes, that, that's the same request we had when we came before.
So we would have to submit, if, so right now we submitted the, the quotes that they've given us to build this machine. If they find anything else wrong with it or they make any other suggestions that, that, that they think would be good, then we would have to still submit a request to the state to say, you know, we would like to add this to the, to the original paperwork. And it's up to them then whether or not they say yes or no, but they've already earmarked that a hundred and eighty-one thousand for this project, so.
You would bring that back to them?
Yes.
We would just do it then and the, the afterthoughts, say no, we spent that and they might not like that.
Correct, we, and what we're trying to do is cut out the middleman by saying, we don't want to wait, if he says, if they end up saying, hey, we found you guys a mast, you know, for this amount of money, we put a camera on it, it's this cheap, you know, it's a big sale, then, then great, if you guys wanna try to get that in, then you would take that information, send it down to the grants and say, we wanna add this to it and have all the AEL numbers that are required and then that would just give us the ability to be able to basically check that block and say, yes, we're adding this extra, extra component to it without having to wait another two weeks to get it on your agenda and all that stuff, so.
And you wouldn't do it unless the state.
Exactly, exactly, state needs to assure that because we're not gonna get into the, into the weeds.
Include that contingency. I mean, I think there's two separate motions, I'll move to accept the Chef's Units as their contract for this vehicle and the project at one sixty-five, two thirty-seven, eighty-eight.
I'll second that.
Any amendment or condition to?
At the moment, that's the motion to make at this moment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
I'm making subsequent motions to allow additional expenditures up to the full original grant amount of one eighty-one, five eighty-five, contingent upon any excess funds or expenditures being approved for by the grants management system.
I'll second your, your.
Good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries, thank you, Commissioner Waring.
Thank you.
One aside, with respect to the problem with Sheepdog and Haligan, as, as we know, they're withholding two hundred and six thousand dollars in county money and we intend to use any resource at our disposal to recover that money. We had had a conversation that perhaps could be treated as a criminal matter rather than a civil matter. We sought a second opinion from the attorney, the deputy attorney general and it was his opinion, which I respect, that this is indeed a civil man, a civil matter and to be addressed with our county attorney and our representative, our legal counsel for the county, not the county attorney. And so we intend to pursue that to the extent that we can, we spare no effort in recovering that money.
Excellent, as we should, right?
Do I have nothing else further unless you have something? I think that's not an issue.
Excellent. Thank you, no more, I'm gonna continue everyone.
Okay, commissioners, Deborah, other business?
I don't have any others. I know, if you have one, I can try to talk about it.
Any public comments, I see a young lady wearing a white jacket in the very back, might have something to say? No, okay.
She has no answer.
Seeing no public comment, I move adjournments.